And I'm gonna start the meeting. So we will deal with minutes at the next meeting. I promised to read what we've got. I think it's just one session. The mayor's not here, public speak. Chris, you're not public, but I didn't know if you wanted to say anything special.
No, I don't need to say anything.
Pardon me? Ah!
Watch that mute button.
I hear that, yeah.
Okay, we'll get right into new business. We have supplemental appropriations and I'm gonna share my screen. Do you see this?
Yes.
Okay, first we have the two million, general stabilization capital. This is saving money, 1.2 in the general and 500,000 capital. Tax rate stabilization is to reduce taxes at the end of the year when we toward the bonding. Now, also wanna show you. No, it's the wrong one, darn. Hold on. These are the balances that I got from Hadel. Free cash had four million when we started. Here comes Nicole. And these are the requests not voted yet out of free cash, okay? So people are aware. So there's 1.98 million requests and votes. In general stabilization, at the end of the day, when we're done with this 1.2, we will have 4.511903 in the bank. That's a lot of general stabilization and I think personally, I think that's great. Moving on to capital stabilization, we have 1.959. There are no requests. When we add the 500,000, we will have 2.464374. So I'm pleased. Counselors, do you have any comments?
Uh, no.
Questions for Hadel or anybody?
I don't, I like the numbers.
I have to say, Mayor, I'm, are you on, Mayor, yet? I admitted her.
Yeah, she's there.
I'm here. Hi.
I wanted to tell you that I very much appreciate this every year when we put it in. I would love to see more in tax rate stabilization, but that's just me. Because I know everybody's talking about the taxes, but we have a lot of places for our free cash. So this is a triple of what we have been doing the last two years. So if somebody asks, that's pretty good, a triple. Anything from anybody? Then I'll take a motion to approve this supplemental appropriation for $2 million.
So move.
You're muted. Second is muted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve $2 million from free cash to general stabilization, capital stabilization, and tax rate stabilization. Do we have any further discussion? Okay. Counselor Gomez.
Aye.
Counselor Coniff.
Aye.
And Counselor Riss says aye. The next thing we're dealing with is the revolving fund cap. This is what we do every year. Jeff, I, this is, we have to do this every year, correct Jeff, to supplement DPW's budget?
Yeah, I, you know, I give credit, a lot of credit to Hadel on this one. I mean, this is the, this is the first year that we've done this for this account. So yeah, this is a, no money is being allocated for this request. This is just to set the cap for that account. And I think Hadel has been, you know, just super diligent on catching stuff. And so this is important that we set this cap. I think Greg and I, you know, we need to crunch some numbers and come back to city council in a month or two or three with an actual appropriation for money to go into this account up to, up to the cap. So it's a little bit more administrative in nature to get this cap set. And I don't know, I would defer to Hadel if she wanted to add more, but it's, there's no money being exchanged as part of this request.
So, Hadel, yes, I'm gonna call on you, but the question is for you, Hadel, this is just a cap. We have to move money in and we don't have a record yet of how much is being used at these charging stations, yet?
So answering to your question, yes, we do. This is more so, it's a part of Asper the Mass General Law 53E and a half. It's a departmental revolving account. The statute states that once you set up the account prior to end of the fiscal year or around during the budget time, we should be voting this. Otherwise, once tax recap is submitted, this account can legally be, be closed by DOR. We caught this on time, so we are putting it as same hearing for the tax classification, so we will be covered this year. This is simply saying that we are spending, we can only spend up to $20,000. So some communities have like revolving account which has earnings or revenues coming in, let's say 50,000. But by setting the cap rate for like 20,000, you are saving that 30,000. That's not the case here in our community. But that's the purpose, big picture from the DOR that we have to, we have to put a cap on the spending. The account, I am logging on in a second. I can give you answer for your second question.
Just so I understand, this cap has to be in place before the tax rate is set. I didn't know this. The DOR could eliminate it if we didn't have it in place. Is that true?
Well, it was supposed to happen in when we did our budget. But since this was our first time, so it goes in three phases. When we decide to set, we have to send a request and then we set up this account the first time and to keep it open, we have to work the cap every year. So going forwards, it would be part of the budget boards. So it will change, yes, but the, the fine line is that we missed during the budget time. So this time is our last chance before DOR can come back and say, you cannot operate this account anymore.
Nice catch, you know, nice catch.
Thank you.
While you're looking for the answer to my other question, I'm gonna put Peg on. Peg, please.
So clearly, I don't, I must be the dumbest person in the room because I really don't understand. So let's say we didn't have this account. What's, what's, what is this $20,000 money? It's coming from bike share. It's coming from electric vehicle stuff, right?
Yeah.
And so that revenue, is this account saying that we can't spend that revenue unless we have an account with a cap for it? I don't.
So this account basically was decided to adopt and I think it's the three year and I would have, I have to ask Jeff to pitch in on this one too. Is that they wanted to keep the revenue separate, so every revenue coming to municipality, if it's not designated, it has to go to the general fund.
Okay.
So this EV charging stations and bike charging stations are generating some sort of revenue. And in order to put it into a designated account and keep them separate from being close to general fund, this account was set up at, in the first year. So city council voted back in November 2020 that we will establish this account for 2021 fiscal year. There was a cap, so when the account was set up, cap was set up too. However, by law for revolving funds account, this cap expires on June 30th of every fiscal year. That's, and if you, if a community wants to keep this account open, they have to vote a cap. It's a, that's how the statute is, that you vote the cap and it can stay open for that fiscal year and you have to do it every year.
Okay.
By putting the cap, there could be three scenarios that you have revenue which is equal to your expenses. There could be revenues are higher than your expenses or your revenues can be lower than your expenses. Either case, when you put a cap on by saying, okay, I, we are maxing out on this account that we will only spend up to 20,000. So when the vote, let's say Jeff comes back in a couple of months and says, I need money. He cannot ask for more than 20,000. He has to ask less than 20,000 or council can vote up to 20,000 only. Does that make sense?
It does. And so instead of going to the general fund,
Yes.
this money is earmarked for the DPW and is part of their budget.
It's not part of their budget. It's a revolving account. Budget is general fund or enterprise fund. Revolving account, so, so for budget, we do not, once it's set, we do not make any changes. It's that stone.
Right.
With the revolving account, there is, is a revenue source and expense in and out, and it does not close on June 30th.
Okay. I think I got it, but I'm, it's some, some of the questions I'm asking are also for the public.
Yeah.
And I'm trying to help them understand as I am trying to understand because that prior conversation sounded like economics, senior year thesis. So I'm just trying to bring it down to the, the level that I can understand and then hopefully the rest of the world can understand. I'm done. Thanks.
I, I have another way of looking at it and I'll get to you Omar again. This $20,000 cap puts that much money in the revolving account by establishing the cap every year. This is ongoing and doesn't go through the budget process. In other words, correct me if I'm wrong, they could spend out of this account and they, and revenue is generated into this account constantly. So it's always available to the DPW either as a revenue where revenue comes in or if they have to do maintenance on these charging stations, they use this account. Am I correct?
Yes, the only one exception, the, another point is to make sure that the vote is important. So let's say DPW generates about 30,000 in revenues in this account. When we set the cap, 20,000, in that particular fiscal year, DPW, though they have $30,000 in the account, they cannot spend that extra 10,000. The cap for spending is 20,000.
Got it. And, and that, that limited, the other 10,000 just goes as a general fund or?
No, no, it stays within the fund. It stays, yes, because it's a revolving account. It, general fund is 001 and revolving account is 02.
I get you, I get you, okay.
Yeah, so it's different from general fund and totally different.
I, I think I understand now. Omar?
Thank you. And I thank you, Counsel Coniff, because that's where I'm going. I'm going to the constituents and the public so that we can all together understand this better. We are not creating a new account. That account, this account already Essex, right?
Yes.
Okay, so they, the revenue from the electric charging and the bike share is coming directly to this account now?
Yes.
All right, so. And to keep this account, we have to today and then tomorrow to set up, to set up a spending limit to keep this account open.
Yes, that's by Mass General Law.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, though the account categorization under Mass General Law is, is, you can, I'm referring to section 53E half. And that talks about this revolving fund account. And as per that Mass General Law, we have to put a cap, spending cap limit on any revolving accounts, revolving fund accounts. In East Hampton, we only have this account at, which falls into this category.
And I understand really well that if the revenue is 30,000, the DPW is only allowed to spend 20,000 with this account.
Yes, if, well, it, it expires every end of the fiscal year. So this year, the request is 20,000. So yes, that would be the case for this fiscal year, fiscal year 2022. When we do fiscal year 23 budget and we decide that we want to increase the cap to 25,000 or 30,000 or decrease the cap to $10,000 and though there is a revenue for 30,000, legally in 23 fiscal year, we can only spend 10,000 only. Like DPW is restricted for, by that amount.
Okay, and for the benefit of the public?
Yeah.
How we came up with 20,000 and not 40,000 or 30,000? Why we came up with that 20,000?
It was just a number they decided, when originally back in November 2020, we did it. The estimate was 10,000 for each category, bike, bike charging and EV charging. Bike and EV charging stations. There was no, we didn't have any history to see, okay, how much it's gonna cost us and what would be the trend? So it just was part of the discussion and everybody involved decided to come up with this number and it was voted. But we might be able to have a better understanding and a, a limit to see the history from last three years when we do 2023.
And probably my last question for now, and I'm sorry if I'm going too long.
That's okay.
If next year we set up 20,000 again and in the middle of the year, we find out that the, the, the limit is too low, is, you, can you come back to the, to the city council again to raise, to rise that 20,000 to 40,000? Or as soon as we set up 20,000, you have to keep it 20,000 for the rest of the year?
I was not prepared for this question. I have to read the law and I have to get back to finance committee with this, with the answer, or I can answer this tomorrow in the meeting if, yeah.
Yeah, I think just that, that's a great idea. That's a good question.
Yeah.
All right, so we have a lot of hands up. Jeff and then Jen and then the mayor. Oh, she's real, lower her hand. Okay, Jeff.
Thanks. Great conversation. I'm a little bit more with Peg on this one because the idea is, is quite simple, is that the electric vehicle charging station generates a little bit of revenue. And I came to everybody and said, we wanna use that revenue to pay the electric bill. Like, so it was quite simple, just like there's revenue coming in and I, and we wanted to pay the electric bill with that and, you know, I appreciate everything Hadel's done. It's like way more complex to set up this account. There has to be a cap. So that's, that's the impetus of this. I wanna be real clear because I know this came up last time. The, the bike share is not a revenue generator. So the, I just think, yeah, as we all move forward in this conversation, the bike share is a cost to the city, although I would argue it provides a great benefit. And we, if you, if you've traveled around, you know, we are now participating in a valid bike share. So one of the things that we did calibrate the, the costs, electric, electric bills are being paid on this account. There was one administrative fee coming out of Valley Bike Share that it's $6,000 a year for us to be participating and it wasn't, they got us to sign on and then they created this fee. The planning department has paid, the planning department has paid this two years in a row, so $12,000 have come out of planning department's one-time funds. And now we're, now I want, like, I think it's desirable for this account to pay for that. So we think that 20, we think that we're, 20,000 is totally sufficient. I just don't want anyone to think that we're gonna be revenue, like, creating $30,000 with a revenue. This is a, a couple hundred dollars, you know, you know, a month maybe is gonna get generated with the electric vehicle charging stations. And, and I just wanna say one more thing, which is the, the biggest issue that we found with the electric vehicle charging station is that Eversource has a base fee which is kind of modest. But as people use the chargers more, there's a demand charge. And it goes from what we would call like a $30 a month fee. If the demand goes up, it goes up to 120, 150 dollars a month. And so the conservation agent and the mayor and others have been talking about, talking about this with Eversource and something they have to correct because it's totally unpredictable. But when we come for the allocation in a, in a, between a month or three months here, we'll have the usage charted out and we'll have kind of an, an explanation of the funding, but it will require an appropriation into this count. But the idea was quite simple. There's a little bit of money coming from the EVs and I was like, can we pay the electric bill with this? And here we are. So I appreciate everything Hadel's done because this is, it's just this idea of like using that revenue to pay the bill. And we need to set the cap, so it's a little bit more simple than I think we might feel.
Jen?
Yes, um, just to add to this, I had been in conversations with Jeff and Cassie when this was all kind of coming online. And we had to set the fees associated with the usage. And we were kind of like, you know, we don't really even know where to start because we want, we want this to be a benefit to the residents. But we also didn't want to go into it blind. So that was kind of the, I think, the purpose of, we want it to be self-sufficient and the revolving account allows us to kind of see if it can be that. And, you know, if not, then at least we have it isolated so we can determine if we're charging X fee. You know, these are our expenses. This is what the income was. And the fact that it's revolving, if in the first year or the first two years, we do great because it's new, you know, and there's, there's more than 20,000 in revenue, that's carrying over into the next years so that if the revenue decreases, you know, as time goes on, but the expense is still there, you know, based on prices going up, then at least we'll have money in there regardless of the cap.
So the money stays in there forever until we get rid of the revolving account?
I will defer to Hadel on that one. I believe, yes, I mean, it, the, the expenses are gonna defray the, the revenue.
I understand that, but if we, I, I, never mind, it's a hypothetical question and we have a time limit, so. I will email Hadel questions because I think it's not critical to the vote. We have to set the cap. And I'm certainly in favor of that. So Hadel, quickly, if you have another statement?
Yes, so I just looked at the law. It states that in any fiscal year, the limit on the amount that may be spent from the revolving fund may be increased with the approval of the city council and mayor in the city or within the approval of the board of select board or finance committee in the town.
So suddenly we have more expenses than we expected? You come back to us, you and Jeff and Greg and whoever, we need more money in this account.
Yes.
Raise the cap, okay.
Yeah.
I'd answer your question, Omar. Okay. Mayor, your hand was up and now it's down. Are you good?
Can I? I'm fine, thank you.
Hadel, yes?
Okay, answer to Jen's question and also yours. It is revolving fund, so it, it closes to, it doesn't close, it rolls over every year. It's that, the, the scenario in this particular account is that even though there is a revenue sitting there, if there is no cap, DPW or planning department cannot spend that money. So if they, if there is a cap and they wanna spend more money, then they have to come to city council for permission to spend out of this account.
Okay. I got it. Any other questions from counselors?
Just a quick one, I just, what you were just saying, Hadel, so by not having a cap, we are essentially saying you can spend zero. And so therefore,
No.
it acts like a cap.
It, well, if there is no cap, then DOR will send us the letter stating you have to close the account.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Just one more quick thing, because I, we, hopefully there's not this long of a discussion at the full city council. We, Hadel and I crunched the numbers, we, we, including that $6,000 admin fee for the bike. We, we looked at the numbers and we think 20,000 is sufficient. So, so we, we did like rationalize 20. We didn't, we don't think it needs to be raised up for this year. So we did talk about that. So it's an adequate number.
Good.
Okay. Um, any other questions, counselors? Then I'll take a motion to approve the $20,000 spending cap for the revolving fund for the DPW for $20,000.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the $20,000 spending cap. Further discussion? Hearing none. Counselor Coniff?
Yes.
Counselor Gomez?
Aye.
Counselor Riss says aye. Tax classification. I'm gonna call up the classification. Randy? Just so you know, and I, I said this to Randy at the beginning, his values thing, we're gonna do at the end of the meeting if we have time. But tomorrow night, I'll have plenty of time to do it. We vote on the tax classification and unless I've read something wrong, this has not changed in all my times on the council. Is that correct, Randy? Randy, are you still here?
Yes, I am. And as far as I know, it has not changed. And I did research from previous assessors to, to get the content here and basically updated it with the, the current numbers. So yeah, we, we have the option to, to figure out the, the different types of property, the classes of property that we're gonna have, you know, residential, commercial, industrial. We have open space as an option, but we don't really have any open space and we don't do things that way here in East Hampton. So that's really kind of a moot point. So it's basically the big three, residential, commercial, industrial, and then there's also personal property. And so, yeah, the, the, the board is recommending for fiscal year 2022 that we adapt a, a single tax rate for all classes of property as opposed to splitting the tax rate. We do have some information, Dan, if you scrolled up a little higher and it, we're, we're talking about the minimum residential factor. And so it's a certain percentage that we would have to adhere to because we, we can't, you know, put too much of a burden on commercial. We can't just decide where it's gonna be on our own. There's certain formulas that come into place. And the minimal residential factor plays into that. But, but since we're not going to do that or, or the board is really recommending that we stick with that single tax rate, we basically don't have a large enough commercial tax base to merit going for the split tax rate and put, placing more of a burden on them. We're, we're trying to encourage businesses to come in to East Hampton from what I understand. And so we're not looking to place an undue burden on the ones that are already here and, and trying to make it look inviting for other places to come in. So there's a couple other different things here. There's this open space discount, but since we don't have open space, we have no city properties classified this way. We're, we're, you know, we're not really going to offer that open space discount. There, there's also a residential exemption that could be available where it would allow to 35% of that assessed value of the residential properties to be basically deferred, but it ends up kind of resulting in a higher tax rate. Because we have to split what, you know, whatever discount we give gets added on to the total that we need and gets split the, the same way anyway. So we're not really gonna want to, we don't want to recommend the residential exemption. There's also the small commercial exemption that we could do and that's for, you know, allows for up to a 10% discount and qualifying factors for businesses that they have to have an average annual average of less than the 10 employees. And the property value needs to be less than $1 million. You know, this, it really shifts that burden more to, from the smaller businesses to the larger businesses. But since we're really not in that position, you know, and, and have just the, the one single rate, it is the board's recommendation that we don't, you know, allow or adopt or adapt the small commercial exemption. So basically, we're looking to have a single tax rate for all the classes of property with no open space discount or residential or small commercial exemption.
So you stole most of my thunder. There was some discussion about- So you stole most of my thunder. There was some discussion about raising the. By by having a split rate, we would raise the rate on commercial property. But I believe, and you correct me if I'm wrong, if we were to take this twelve point eight four percent. The 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 amount of people in the the other classes of property and raise the rate, say, just on commercial. We would have to raise it significantly in order to affect this large group. And if we raised it significantly, we would probably drive businesses out of town. Am I correct? We have to raise it a lot to make it effective for private.
By, you know, fifty percent higher tax rate for commercial, industrial and personal property is basically what it would end up being. So that's quite.
Fifty percent.
Yeah, fifty percent higher than what they're seeing now.
I don't think the businesses would appreciate that.
Exactly, and with the smaller base that we have and from what I've heard since I've been here, we're trying to encourage. More businesses to come to East Hampton. And so if we ever have, you know, it was great to have the River Valley co-op. But it it's hardly, you know, uh something that's gonna tip the scales in 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 the favor of. Of having a a split rate be, you know, uh an overall good thing for the town.
Thank you. Uh it's amazing to me that even people would consider it. I just wanna say before I get to your peg. I've been here twenty-five years. This has been talked about and absolutely refused by the city council, by former mayors. I believe even by the selectmen when they were back in those days. We will stay with a single tax rate. Because we don't have a huge business base. Peg.
So uh Randy, can you give me an example of what other municipalities might do? If there was a residential exemption, what what does that look like? Is there a typical or or what what would other municipalities use that exemption for if you are aware of anyone doing it?
Um unfortunately, I have no experience um at any towns that ever did that, the residential exemption. And um, you know, basically, it's just a a a a little bit of a shift. Uh you know, it's Robin Peter to pay Paul, so to speak, because any exemption that's given just gets. Spread out over the the rest of the the value that's there. So even though you would be getting uh somewhat of an exemption. You're still, you're still paying with it with a resulting, you know, the the resulting uh. Effect is gonna be a higher tax rate for everyone. So you get a little bit of a discount, but then you're giving it back because you're paying more. For a thousand dollars of of what you are assessed for.
Okay, thanks.
And I was just thinking about that. One thing we do do is for lower uh for seniors. We give that thousand dollar um break if they meet income qualifications. But that's such a small amount of, a small quantity of people. Uh really, it does raise the rate for everybody else, but we're giving them a break, correct? So. But it's small enough that really doesn't affect everybody so much. Because what is it, sixty-six people or sixty sixty properties that might qualify for that thousand dollars?
Right around that, yes. And so, yeah, it's much less of an impact overall. Uh with the residential exemptions, uh or or not residential exemptions, but the senior exemptions. Um on their residence uh than a residential exemption for everyone across the board.
Yeah, that would be quite big.
And you know, Peg, I think that it's it's more of, you know, larger cities that have a really big commercial base. So that when you do take that, that those funds that you're discounting and spread it across, you have. More of a of a commercial base and more contributors that are helping that. And so it's usually uh. You know, unfortunately, it ought to be past experience, but from um, you know, the the knowledge that I do have about it. It's really something that's more for uh something with a smaller residential base when you have a higher tax rate.
Okay, thanks, Randy.
Any other questions or comments from anybody? So I'm gonna request a motion that the city council approve. The assessor's recommendation for a single tax rate for all classes of property for no open space discount. Um for no residential exemption and no small commercial exemption.
Move.
Second.
We have a motion to agree to the assessor's recommendations for this year's class rates. Uh any further discussion? Hearing none, Counselor Gomez?
Aye.
Counselor Coniff?
Aye.
Counselor Riss says aye. I'm gonna now, now I'll get back to you, Randy, if we have time for your PowerPoint. We're interested in that. Uh next up is the auditor's quarterly fiscal report. I have the revenue report here. Um I'll scroll through it slowly. Um Hadel, you wanna say anything about it as we go? Is Hadel still there?
Yes, I'm still here. Um.
You can see this, okay? Is it big enough for everybody?
Yeah, oh, for me, yes.
Okay, so. What I'm seeing here. Is all of these, these are the uh actual receipts and I see a lot of. By September, if I meant standing this correctly, we're at a hundred percent already in a lot of these receipts. Am I correct there?
Yes.
And we're only in the first quarter. That bodes well for more revenue than we expected. I'm gonna go to the next page. Um again, we have a lot of hundred percents here for actual receipts and revenues for this year. Anybody have any questions? Please uh just say something.
No, I would, Dan, I would, instead of scrolling through all these numbers, I would turn it back to Hadel. And and say what on this list is concerning, out of the norm, something we need to be worried about? Is there anything on this list that makes you stay up at night? Although I know that there's other things that keep you up at night, on this particular list, where should we be focusing our attention and show? And have some concerns, if any?
At this point, there is none. Um and the reason is, if I um, if you go on to. Page four. Uh.
These are my highlights, because I was just.
Oh, that's why, okay, okay.
I highlighted them because I found that interesting and it's it's good, because we're a quarter way through and we're more than a quarter in of collections. So that's a good thing.
Yes, um can I ask you to make me the host so I can share this spreadsheet which I prepared this afternoon? It has a comparison from.
I'm gonna stop my share and I'll do that right now. I'll make you a host. You are now a co-host. You go ahead and share.
Okay. Are you guys able to see this spreadsheet?
Yes, good.
Okay, so this is um what um council um council risk had on the screen was up to this point. I was able to get to this uh comparison this afternoon, but was not able to send it to the finance committee. Um so did the this portion from here. From this section till, oops, sorry, here. All of these are our local revenues. Any receipt we received um from the community for. Either from like um taxes, um state meals tax revenue, uh room taxes. Um revenues from uh police outside duty, board of health, um city clerk's office, building inspector's office. All the local receipts are here. Um these are actual revenues which we received to date. And this is what we estimated on our revenue budget. If we compare from last year to this year, the la- last year. Let's say for motor vehicle excise, we were at six point nine eight percent on uh September thirtieth. This year, we have collected thirteen point two zero in motor vehicles. So we are already up. Up beyond where we were standing during the pandemic. Um, all of these numbers were conservatively estimated when we did the revenue budget. Bottom line, it comes down to that we have collected fifty-six point five eight percent of our local. Estimated revenue budget. At the end of the first quarter.
Okay.
Is, right? Um the second category is the real estate. It. Normally, we get all the big, big change happens in January and February when all the bills are finalized and goes out. So we'll see, see increase, so like right, even without that factor in. We are beyond where we were last year. So last year, we were at twenty-seven point two zero. This year, we are already at thirty point eight eight percent collected. So technically, if you think about it, it's like. Um quarter first marks twenty-five percent of the budget. Either expense or revenue. So technically, to be on the, in the sound position, we should be at twenty-five percent. But we are at twenty-seven point zero nine percent, so we are doing really good this year.
I'm very happy. Uh just so for the public's knowledge, if we have a surplus in revenue. It doesn't get to be spent until it's declared by the DOR as free cash. Is that a correct statement?
Yes.
So in other words, people might see, oh, you collected uh two hundred percent more money in. Your um cannabis excise tax. Can't you spend that on something this year? You can't. If you've only budgeted a hundred thousand dollars, that's all you can spend. The rest of it goes to free cash after the DOR certifies your surplus. It goes to free cash next year. That's why we have a lot of free cash, because we conservatively estimate our revenues. Am I correct in all of that?
Yes, you are.
Okay, excellent. And I I agree with that.
Okay.
Because if you, if you, you know, I'm saying this for the mayor's uh reasons is because if the mayor tried. Or any mayor tried to use uh higher estimates of revenue and we didn't get it, we'd be in thick. We would be in rough shape. I'd rather have surplus than deficit. Because we decided, oh, we're gonna make more money in property taxes and we didn't make it. So I I just wanna say, I think that policy is a good one.
So that was the portion which covered um the general fund. Um, here, local receipt, yeah, local receipt, real estate and cherry sheet. That's all general fund. This is enterprise. So again, twenty-five percent should be the mark to see whether we are doing good or not. We are beyond twenty-seven uh twenty-five percent in uh um enterprise revenues also, so they're also, we are doing pretty good. But the main two rates which um runs the enterprise fund is water rates and sewer rate. So again, the comparison, we're not doing that great in the water collection compared to last year. But it's not a huge difference. Um however, we are doing definitely above twenty-five percent. So we are doing so good. This is just zero point zero one percent variance in water um in sewer rates. So even for enterprise point of view, also, we are doing really great collect with the collection.
And I see on the bottom CPA, we have five thirty-four. I just wanna tell the public. And our fellow counselors that we got an incredible increase in our match this year. So we might be up to something like eight hundred and thirty thousand this year in our budget rather than five thirty-four. Our CPA got that announcement from the coalition, so I was very pleased to see that. That means the state is giving us thirty-nine, almost forty percent match. That's what they announced. Did you see that, Hadel?
Yeah, I did not see that yet. Uh and these numbers are still from fiscal year twenty-one?
Right, I'm just saying, I'm just announcing that as as I'm very pleased, as a CPA chairman.
I see.
There's more revenue coming in than we expected. Again, we do, we do uh, we do conservatively. Anybody have any more questions on this nice report from Hadel?
No, but I just wanna know if if Hadel can send this by email?
Yes, I can. Yes, I I will.
Thank you, Hadel.
Yeah, no problem.
We're not approving anything, but this is information. So uh, Hadel, could you stop your share?
Yes.
I wanna go to Jen. So Jen, I have the report and I'm gonna show it. Do you want to share so you can go over it? It's up to you. I can scroll or you could do it. Or is this the correct report?
Yes, that is uh.
The one that sent me a little while ago.
Yes, that's the correct report. Um and I'm fine with actually kind of just talking through this particular. This tab and then probably the next one, the summary tab. Um and if anybody, if anybody has any questions regarding any of the other ones. I'm happy to address them, but um essentially, this is, this reports on our cares spending. Through September thirtieth. Um the next report that's due is December sixth. And that will include up to this. Um. Activity. And I say that because the last report was on nine thirty to the state. Um and that only included expenses through six thirty. So there's a little bit of lag time in in our spending. Uh in our reporting of the spending. Um if you can see at the very bottom where I have remainder. The two thirty-seven, one eighty-seven, thirty-seven. So that is what was left. Of the one point four million that we were given of cares money as of September thirtieth. So keep in mind, we still have to do October, November, December. We don't have a ton of expenses coming in, but we do have some. Payroll that is still um being charged, especially for the health department. Um wh- which was the plan all along to to continue that through twelve thirty. Um and then we've had some um IT-related bills for um. Just subscriptions and um things that came up with all of the working from home and and the remote. Um access and things like that. So so those types of bills are still getting paid. There's not, there's not. Like a tremendous amount of spending, new spending going on. It's more or less, we're trying to tie up loose ends, you know, what what what? Did we expend that maybe we haven't, you know, reported yet or or thought about? Or like I said, the the IT bills that, you know, still kind of filter in. Um I will say.
Could I ask a quick question?
Sure.
FEMA ineligibilities, do we need this much money to cover us in case FEMA says no to something? Is that what that means?
Well, so yes and no, and I'll explain that. This two thirty-seven, one eighty-seven, like I said, this is what's left as of nine thirty. So there's still going to be expenses from ten-one to twelve thirty-one anyway. So we'll, you know, let's say, I probably say it's thirty-seven thousand dollars, okay? Um, that leaves us with around two hundred. Now, one of the, the the initial FEMA request was for ninety-five thousand dollars. They turned around and approved eighty-five thousand dollars. And initially, they didn't even approve that much. Um we had to appeal it and, you know, kind of. Give them all of the documentation that they wanted in order for them to to say, okay, we'll give you the eighty-five. Cares is saying that any items that FEMA deems ineligible. As long as they are COVID-related, which I haven't submitted anything to FEMA that's not COVID-related. Um, we can reallocate cares money to do that. So that's why I put possible FEMA ineligibilities, because already ten thousand of that. Is going to have to be. Is going to have to be. Reallocated to cover that ten thousand dollars that was put into FEMA expenses that is FEMA ineligible.
Okay, that answers that. Peg.
Well, Jen, as you know, for eighteen months now, I have never understood this. So. Did we, so the first two columns, the original request and the second request, we should consider those. All joined together to make one point four million.
Correct.
Okay, is that cash that is in our bank account or we submit things and we get money back?
We've received all of that money.
It's sitting in the bank.
Well, it's being in the bank less the expenses that we've already.
So you, you, so how's this work? So if you buy P P E equipment.
Mm-hmm.
With that money, do you have to prove to FEMA that you bought P P E equipment with the money? And they say, awesome, that counts. And you keep this ledger of all the things that count toward it. And you spend it on the things that they will let you spend it on. Like, we can't go buy a new yacht. We have to like spend it on COVID related expenses. I know, darn. So that's what you're taking care of. You're managing that vis a vis the amount that. Cares gave us.
Right.
You're saying is, there are some things that FEMA comes back and says, nice try, but no. But we've expended it. So does that then, do we reimburse this account from the general fund? To say, we can't use it, we can't use this money, but we spent money. So how does that reconciliation work?
So it's, so the way that. I will, I I can explain it. And accounting wise, obviously, Hadel would would. Yay or nay this, but my thought is, so like, for instance, the first ten thousand. We haven't received the actual eighty five thousand yet. We were just approved for the eighty five thousand. So that ten thousand dollar discrepancy. They actually, on the spreadsheet, they put next to certain items FEMA ineligible, FEMA ineligible. So those add up to ten thousand, whatever.
Okay.
So my intention is to then talk with Hadel and say, okay. These items fall into technology or whatever. So can can you reclassify this expense from the FEMA expense line item X? To the cares expense line item X.
Okay.
You know what I mean? And just to give you like a a kind of a, uh, I don't know. Uh, what if scenario? So. We still, I still am waiting on about two hundred and fifty five thousand dollars in approved expenses from FEMA. My guess is they're not going to approve all of that. Every municipality that I've spoken with. Said they're being extremely picky.
But you've spent it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right. And and that is why there is a a remainder balance on the cares money. Because I don't want to completely allocate all of it, just in case.
Gotcha.
What does that mean? I mean, you know, is there the possibility that if we don't time it exactly right? You know, we'll have to give them back thirty thousand of the cares money or whatever. I mean, yes, but. With the way that FEMA was. In the first round of the um. The approvals, I I can pretty much anticipate that. Between our October and December expenses to cares, plus the FEMA ineligible ten thousand that's already. Needs to be reclassified and then whatever comes of this next and final round. Um, and then don't forget, we also have, um, there's a FEMA vaccination. Um. Uh, fund and that's a separate. Um. Pot of money, if you will, from FEMA. Uh, but if they deem any of. Those items as COVID related but not vaccine related. That's another instance of possibly having to reclassify.
And we hired someone to help you with all this, right? Because.
Yes.
This is really complicated.
I'll be honest with you. So we, we had a woman, Lynn from South Hadley. Fantastic. And she actually, I had this spreadsheet in multiple different spreadsheets. And she actually took it all and kind of put it into this workable spreadsheet so that it's kind of a big picture. But with some summary sheets. And more or less, what I needed her to do for me was, you know. I said, okay, I have all these spreadsheets and I have all of this reporting and these expenses and these P O's. But I need to make sure that it agrees with what has been posted to the posted to the G L's. And that's what she helped me do. She she took it and kind of put it into, you know. A readable format and and an easily um. You know, ma- manipulated format so that I can kind of play with numbers here and there and and. You know, if we have to reclassify something, I can just move it on here and then now that'll give me my new balance and I don't have to worry about, you know. Oh, I I I did four reclassifications and I I don't remember what that one was or whatever, so.
And we have new federal money coming, so your work is cut out for you.
Well.
I wanna thank you for this. Um, it's getting late, so I have to kind of cut this back. If counselors of Omar or Peg, if you have any more questions, I guess you should write. My simplification for this is, we have FEMA money, we have CARES Act money. If FEMA doesn't come through, your balance in CARES Act can pay for those accounts. And God forbid, if we run out of money in CARES Act, we have to pay for it cuz we've already spent it.
Correct.
Am I correct in all of that?
You are.
All right. Randy, I have to apologize. It's five to six. I'm gonna make sure that tomorrow night you get to do your value thing. I apologize. I think it was a great uh 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 informational PowerPoint. And tomorrow night at the public hearing, you'll be here, right? No, no crying, no fake crying. We've, we've seen enough of that. Sorry, that was, that's slapping myself.
I will be ready.
All right. Uh, Jen and Hadel, thank you very much. I have the information. People might ask tomorrow night, what's, what's the stabilization accounts are. I have that information, but if you wanna come. But uh, thank you all. Like, uh, we have to, we have to conclude cuz unfortunately, another committee needs to use the account. Um, and uh, I'll take a motion to adjourn unless there's anything else.
So move.
Second.
Motion to adjourn. Counselor Gomez.
Aye.
Counselor Connor.
Aye.
Counselor Riss says aye. Thank you all. Thank you for everything. Randy, we'll see you tomorrow night.